Good evening, and welcome to the July 10th Planning Commission meeting with the Secretary of Calorol.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Moran?
Here.
Commissioner Count?
Here.
Commissioner Strongman?
Here.
Commissioner Quoc?
Here.
Commissioner Klopp?
Here.
Vice Chair Nighting?
Here.
Chair Anderson?
Here.
All is present, we have quorum.
Very good. Item one, or item two, rather, is consent calendar. Do we have anything on the consent calendar tonight?
Staff has nothing to recommend.
Okay. And we will pass on to number three, public communications. There are two parts of the meetings this evening where the public gets to comment. One is during each individual hearing, if they have comments on that particular item, or if they haven't commented on something which was within the jurisdiction of the planning commission, but not on tonight's agenda, that they wish to speak on. You can do that now. Regardless of when you speak, if you would fill out a speaker card, that would be helpful to us. Anybody wish to make a public communication at this time? Does not appear so. Then I will go on and ask if anyone has any ex parte communications to disclose. Seeing none. Move on to item four, which is the public hearing for Elia's Restaurant. Inquesting Planning Commission approval of a conditional use permit to approve, to extend alcohol sales and service until 12:00 a.m. with consumption permitted until 12:30 a.m., seven days a week.
Ms. Gill? Hello. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Simmer Gill, Senior Planner with the city. We are here tonight to consider the conditional use permit for Elia Restaurant and Bar that's located at 1520 Locust Street. And the conditional use permit is to serve alcohol past 11:00 p.m. at this establishment. The applicant representing the project, Guy Houston, is here tonight. And from the city, we have Lieutenant Slater and myself to answer any questions that you may have after the presentation. And I also wanted to point out that the draft resolution attachment one of your agenda packet has been updated to follow the notice of appeal procedures in the Muni Code. We, staff had missed the 10-day appeal period date, so the additional language is added in red font on pages one and 11 of attachment one. And just to orient you with the site, Elia Restaurant is a 3,000-square-foot restaurant with a 239-square-foot outdoor patio area right in front of the restaurant. It is located between two other similar establishments, Vanessa's Bistro and Limone. And the surrounding area consists primarily, a mix of commercial uses, primarily restaurants and retail. And there is a mixed-use multifamily development, the Lyric Building, located right across the way. The site is zoned pedestrian retail, which does permit restaurant uses by right. And a use permit is required to serve alcohol past 11:00 p.m. And here is a look at the floor plan. As you see, the entrance is the seating area for the public with the bar to the left. As you go down to the back of the restaurant, there is a stair that leads to a mezzanine area that has an upstairs dining area. However, the upstairs is only for special events or for reservations only. The public would, the public could access the ground floor. And then there's the outdoor patio dining area that has 20 seats. It is currently being used for the sale of, service of alcohol and the sale of food. However, there is a operator's permit that's required now under the outdoor dining program, which was adopted in September of 2024. And that is included as a condition of approval as part of this agenda packet in attachment one. And just to go over some background, on June 13th of 2023, Elia began its operations with a AUP serving alcohol from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., seven days a week, under a Type 47 ABC license. And between 2023 and early 2024, Elia did receive multiple notices of violation from the Walnut Creek Police Department due to late-night alcohol service and also associated incidences that did occur past the 11:00 p.m. cutoff time. So on August 22nd of 2024, the Planning Commission did review those incidences and those violations and made changes to Elia's AUP, essentially seizing their sales and service of alcohol to 9:30 p.m. and seizing the alcohol consumption till 10:00 p.m. And this was a 90-day probationary period that gave Elia an opportunity to come into compliance. And it ended on December 3rd of 2024. And since then, even during that time, Elia did make operational improvements such as staff training, website and signage updates on alcohol policy. And so on December 4th of 2024, the Community Development Department, as well as the Walnut Creek Police Department, did determine that Elia has been successfully operating in compliance and there have been no noted violations. So as a result of that, the original hours of alcohol sale, service and consumption ending at 11:00 were reinstated for this business. And following that, January 27th of this year, the applicant applied for a conditional use permit so they could extend the alcohol hours past 11:00 p.m. Elia is a full-service restaurant and bar, which operates from 10:00 a.m. to midnight, seven days a week. Alcohol is served in the indoor and outdoor seating area of the restaurant. The applicant is aware that they would need a operator's permit moving forward to to have any type of service related to food or alcohol in that area. And the restaurant also has indoor live entertainment that takes place from Thursday through Saturdays. And they also have a third-party security service onsite those days. And the proposed hours are midnight will be the end time for alcohol sales and service, and 12:30 a.m. would be the end time for alcohol consumption. There is signage onsite that's posted at all of the exit and outdoor dining areas. So I think here I said it should be posted, it's currently posted onsite, so they are following this. As well as, there's a condition of approval, but currently all employees are required under state law to be certified and trained, have the RBS certification. And since the hours were rolled back, back in September of 2024, Elia has made several operational updates that are still in effect. One is having an onsite manager that oversees the operations, monitor alcohol service and live entertainment to make sure all the noises within the acceptable noise levels of the city. Signage updates, which is posting, having alcohol policy posted at the bar, as well as marketing updates on the website and the menu, really highlighting or focusing more on the the food service of the restaurant rather than the alcohol component of the business. And the Walnut Creek PD did confirm that Elia is operating in compliance with the AUPs, and there have been no reported violations. And before you are findings that are required in order to approve a conditional use permit to serve alcohol past 11:00 p.m. And these findings are outlined and addressed in the attachment one resolution of your packet. And here are additional alcohol findings for the Planning Commission's consideration. The project does comply and meet all of these findings. And staff does support the proposed conditional use permit because it does meet the findings as there's been no nuisance or activity that have required any police calls or incidences. And with that, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission adopt the draft, updated draft resolution approving the conditional use permit to allow alcohol sales and service till midnight and alcohol consumption till 12:30 a.m. for Elia Restaurant. And the Walnut Creek PD does support the CUP. However, there's a condition, I believe it's condition number two, that the, that the CUP shall take effect on September 5th of 2025. And the reason for that is because by September 5th, there will be a complete, completed, a full year of compliance of operations since the hours were rolled back, back in September of 2024. And that is all I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions of staff?
I have a quick question. It closes at 12, but the consumption goes until 12:30?
That's correct.
Is that kind of a common thing, or just to get kind of people out the door?
Yeah, because if they're serving the last glass of alcohol at 10:59, right, oh, sorry, 11:59, so they give them at least a half hour to finish their drink so that they can...
Sure. Even if it's closed?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I wanted. Thanks.
Questions? Commissioner Count?
And how does this compare with the surrounding restaurant times?
We have, I did look into that, and there's approximately 13 other conditional use permits that we've given to establishments that serve alcohol past 11:00 p.m. And three of them were some recent ones, Original Joe's, Luna Sea Lounge, and Pinstripes. And they all serve alcohol till 12:30 a.m.
Okay, so this is not, this is not the only one?
Not uncommon.
Right, right, okay. And then I think just to reiterate for the public to understand, if we approve this resolution and it is found that the restaurant is, is having issues, what are the, what are the ramifications of that for the restaurant?
Yeah, there's a condition of approval for that as well. If there are issues, again, as there were in the past, then Walnut Creek Police Department and the Community Development Department will take action and bring the, bring Elia back before this commission to either modify or revoke, if needed, the permit if it's not in compliance with the conditional use permit findings.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Moran?
Sorry, one more. Just, so I want to be clear. The outdoor patio is allowed to serve alcohol or is not? And if it is not, they need another outdoor permit?
So prior to September of 2024, it was, it was a part of the AUP, it was allowed, they were allowed to serve alcohol and food. But since September of 2024, the outdoor dining program has taken effect, and all businesses or establishments in the PR, as well as the, I believe, the downtown core area of Walnut Creek, all of the establishments now require a outdoor dining permit, not just for the alcohol component, but also for the food, just for service of that. And I have brought this to the applicant's attention, so they will be applying soon. They do have some time till September 5th, but they have already gotten the application form, and that's also a condition in the draft resolution tonight.
So tonight, we're taking up the question of inside?
It's all indoor, correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. The applicant can speak now for up to 10 minutes, if you wish.
Certainly won't take 10 minutes, but Guy Houston here represents Elia Restaurant tonight. And I want to thank staff for doing a great job, and we've worked with the police department to craft this. We talked about the date that it would be effective. But the bottom line is Elia hasn't had a violation since last Fourth of July. And so a lot of education for them, but also education for their patrons. There was an expectation from some patrons on what they could and what they couldn't do. And so now, we understand the rules, and there's been more than a year of compliance. And so we appreciate Ms. Gill for doing a fantastic job, and the police department for bringing this here tonight, and we'd ask for your support.
Any questions to the applicant? I will note that we have had a number of these kinds of applications over the past few years. And some of them have come with, you know, this history of noncompliance. And not all of them have responded effectively to that, so it's good to see that everyone's happy with that. All right. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on this matter? Doesn't look like we have any. There is five minutes allowed for you to rebut any speakers that have come, but if you have no further
Got your motion.
Comments, I will unclose the public hearing and bring it back to the Planning Commission for any questions or discussion or motions.
I just would like to actually echo what you said in gratitude for the owner, the city staff, the police department, all working together to resolve this. This was a very concerning set of circumstances when they came to the Planning Commission last year. And it was not an easy choice for the Planning Commission to cut back hours of business and service for alcohol for our business. We care very much about our businesses. But you heard the concern, you responded to the concern, you made the changes, and clearly, the success is in the pudding. I mean, no violations and support, both from the city staff and the police, for you going forward. So I just want to thank you. I know that took work.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, discussion, or a motion?
I'll do it. I would like to make a motion that we adopt draft resolution number XXX, conditional use permit number Y 25007, Elia's extended hours of operation for alcohol sale, service and consumption at 1520 Locust Street, as amended.
I'll second.
Discussion on the motion. Now, we do call the roll.
Okay. Commissioner Klopp?
Yes.
Commissioner Quoc?
Yes.
Commissioner Moran?
Yes.
Commissioner Count?
Yes.
Commissioner Strongman?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Nighting?
Yes.
And Chair Anderson?
Yes.
The ayes have it?
All right, thank you very much. Thank you to the applicant and the staff. The second hearing is on regarding the Taco Bell drive-through at Rossmore, proposed a conditional use permit for the development of a 1,495-square-foot eating and drinking establishment on a 12.4-acre site located at 1960 Tice Valley Boulevard in the Rossmore Shopping Center. And we have a staff report.
My name is Gerardo Victoria. I'm an Assistant Planner in the Community Development Department. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. The project before you today is the Taco Bell drive-through restaurant at the Rossmore Shopping Center. So just some site context. This is the Rossmore Shopping Center right here. The star is where the new Taco Bell will be located. This is Rossmore Parkway right here. This is Tice Valley right here. The nearest residential area is located to the north up here. And the Rossmore community is located a little bit further south down here. The general plan designation for the site is general retail. The zoning designation is the Plan Development 2189. The existing site at the Rossmore Shopping Center has a mix of uses, restaurants, banks and retail. It's approximately a 12.4-acre site. As I stated, surrounded by a mix of uses, residential and so forth. The project description is a proposed construction of a 1,495-square-foot Taco Bell restaurant with a drive-through and a takeout service at the shopping center. As you can see right here, this is where the new Taco Bell will be located. It's going to have new outdoor seating, new landscaping and new lighting. The drive-through restaurant with the, excuse me, the Taco Bell with the drive-through restaurant was contemplated and passed in the Plan Development 2189. As you can see here, the context of a site, just a little bit more where Tice Valley Boulevard is, Rolling Hills Drive and the Rossmore Parkway here. So the site layout. So the new Taco Bell is about 1,400 square feet with a drive-through. The existing shopping center has 537 parking stalls. 35 are proposed to be removed, which will leave the shopping center with 502 stalls, which they are still conforming to the parking standard in the zoning, which calls for a ratio of 4.0 per 1,000 square feet. Even with removing the 35 stalls, they're at 4.2. This area right here, the tenant control area that is controlled by Safeway, that is an agreement, not between Safeway and Taco Bell, that is an agreement between the Rossmore Shopping Center and Safeway. External access to the site is via the Rossmore Parkway here. And the internal access is through the Rossmore Shopping Center. As we all know, you cannot come down Rossmore Parkway and make a left onto the site. The building layout, so just a bit of a housekeeping issue. This is the most updated floor plan right here. It has not changed. You see, this area is for nine seats inside the restaurant only. This is the outdoor dining area right here. And the drive-through is obviously located right here through this area. So the project is before you tonight for your consideration on the two conditional use permits for the drive-through and the takeout service window and the design review, which includes the new landscaping, the new lighting, color and materials. It went to the Design Review Commission as a study session on June 4th, and the DRC made their recommendations. These are the conditional use permit findings for the project as outlined in your draft resolution. So the design review made numerous recommendations. The first one was to save the two London plane trees and remove additional parking as necessary per code. The applicant considered the comments and adjusted the project to save the two London plane trees, which I'll get to in the landscape plan. To save the two London plane trees, the parking and the circulation issues stemming from the Safeway tenant agreement cannot be adjusted further. The existing parking layout must remain. Another comment was to prioritize the circulation patterns for safety, contact Safeway to design around the opening. In response to the DRC comments, the applicant will plant additional landscaping between the drive-through entrance lane and the parking exit to provide a more intuitive circulation pattern. And also to reconsider the tower, reconsider the color scheme and the signage to be more compatible with the residential neighborhood. So the applicant considered the comments, but made no changes to the tower height as it conforms to the height requirements in the zoning. The applicant has upgraded the primary wall color to match the existing Rossmore Shopping Center. In response to the DRC comments on the signage, the applicant removed one sign that was facing east and will have one sign on the tower that is facing away from the residential neighborhood. So the one sign that is remaining is facing the Chevron gas station. When they first came into the Design Review Commission, they had three signs, now they only have one. So just some major designs on the architecture for the Taco Bell. This is the proposed new color scheme right here. This is the north elevation, which is facing the, the drive-through. And this is the south elevation, which is the entrance, which is facing the Chevron gas station. So some upgrades, the horizontal fiber cement hardy reveal panels that are purple and cyberspace located here and here. And the artisan V groove horizontal fiber cement siding in cedar gray here. So this is what they came to the Design Review Commission, and this is their new color scheme. The black magic stucco color has been removed and replaced with the cyberspace. I will admit, I didn't know what cyberspace color was, so I looked it up. It's like a charcoal neutral, neutral blue. And then the one sign that's facing on the entrance, that's facing the Chevron gas station, still remains. Just a little bit bigger. These are the further elevation drawings. As you can see, this is what's proposed today, here and here. This is what was proposed at the Design Review Commission. The sign has been removed, and here. So the lighting and the signage, as I stated, it's going to be one new internally illuminated wall sign facing the Chevron gas station, that's 45 square feet. Their previous one was 31 square feet, but it still conforms to the Rossmore Shopping Center Master Sign Program. They are building, not building, but placing four new light poles throughout the site. One right here, another one right here, one right here, and one right here. There's two existing already here and down here. Directional signage will be located throughout the drive-through. And we have the wall sconces and the LED wall lights. And this is the signage, the one new sign that's staying. So the landscape plan. It's over 5,000 square feet of new landscaping, a new bioretention basin area located here. So at the Design Review Commission meeting, the applicant proposed to remove two London plane trees that are outlined here in green with the yellow stars. These are now staying. It's been since revealed that this one out, this London plane tree outlined in red is in poor health. The City Arbors went to the site on June 9th and determined that the tree is in fact in poor health and has authorized removal of this tree right here. The applicant is proposing four new trees located in blue right here. And this tree proposed for removal that's in poor health is tree number 17 in your plan set. So staff anticipates the use, to use a secret determination from the mitigated negative declaration by council. Notice of determination number 216-135. No mitigations were necessary against that mitigated negative declaration. And staff also anticipates using the categorical exemption 15303, new construction. So staff recommends move to adopt the draft resolution approving the secret determination, the conditional use permits and the design review. And staff is available for questions or comments. The applicant is also here, Mr. Grieve?
Let me start that off. Go back to the, the landscape plan, yes. So with the removal of the tree marked in red?
Yes.
How visible will the, I think it's the east elevation, be from the Rossmore Parkway as you drive in? I mean, is that, I noticed there's a couple of other trees nearby. Is it screened by the other trees or is it?
Yes, these two trees right here, the London planes are big. It's screening that, this, I'll show you. This is the east elevation, it's screening that.
Well, those trees are actually off to the right in that.
No, they're right here. They're located right here.
Okay. So that, that east elevation is not particularly visible from Rossmore Parkway?
This east elevation, I mean, you could see the building.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Quoc?
All right. I just wanted to clarify the, the tree removal with respect to the Arbors report. So when I read the City Arbors report, my understanding was the Arbors had gone out there because the city was under the impression that the tree marked in red had died. So if I'm reading the report, rereading it again, what the Arbors actually found was it was not in fact dead, but actually in poor health. it was not in fact dead, but actually in poor health. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Strongman.
I have some questions about the circulation of the drive-through. If you could bring that back up.
Let me get this one right here.
And what's the left turn? There's a left turn at the top right there.
This one?
Yeah.
This one is, so there's five parking stalls controlled by Safeway. One, two, three, four, and then five right here. This is so this car could go out, or if somebody makes a left and thinks, oh no.
Okay.
They could just come in there and.
And moving actually through the drive-through.
Yes.
If I read the blueprints correctly, the, I guess the squawk boxes to talk to the, make your orders are two different places in the lineup there?
Yes. So the drive-through lanes, one is for a pickup order and one is to actually place your order. The outside lane is to place an order, and then the inside lane is to pick up your order. There's, the takeout window is only going to be located right here. Whether you're picking up or you're placing an order, you still pick it up from this window. There's also the takeout service window that's located in this area. So someone can drive in here, park, and go to this window and pick up their order also if they don't want to stay in the drive, drive-through lane.
So you basically, we, you will be drive in, place your order, stop your car, get out and go pick it up?
No, you, you drive in, place your order. If, if you haven't ordered, you drive in, place your order like a regular drive-through, and then you pick it up at this window. If you've already placed an order and you don't want to park, you come into this drive-through on the inside lane, and you just keep it moving until the end of, of, of the drive-through lane over here to pick up your order.
Okay. A new way of doing it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Cound.
Yeah, so a little bit more about the circulation. There, there were some community concerns, I think, about pedestrian safety and access. And so if you could talk about where, where it is that people walk on here. I know that there's the, the ADA sections, if you could point that out for the public.
There's a new sidewalk right here.
So that would be, that's not existing? That would be added?
Yes.
Okay.
Sidewalk right here. This is still existing, but this is the new sidewalk.
Okay, so they could, from that street, they can walk up that sidewalk, and then the door is on that side?
Yes, the front door is located right here.
And that's also the side that the outdoor?
Yes.
Seating area is?
Yes.
Okay. So they wouldn't have to cross where the cars are turning? And cars can't come in on that side anyway? They can only go out?
Yes.
Right?
And then the signage is right here on this tower that's oriented towards the gas station, away from the residential area up here.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Moran. Could you go back to the outside color scheme really quick?
This one?
Yeah. The ones on the bottom came through the Design Review.
Yes.
And the ones on the top are what, are the changes that were made?
Yes, correct.
So we went from more of like a deep purple to a more vibrant color?
Yes. They call it bold purple, yes.
Can, I, forgive me, I did not watch the Design Review Committee meeting. Could you just maybe walk me through why that was, why we're looking at the, the new color versus the old color? Was there a thought process behind that?
So there were some concerns with the black color up here. I, I think they wanted to conform it more towards the Rossmore Shopping Center, this bold purple. Chip, do you remember exactly?
Yeah, there was, there was also concern of location and that it was in the Rossmore Shopping Center and who the, who the target audience is, and that those, the, the black and purple colors didn't really speak to that primary audience, or nor did it, did it match anything that's already in the shopping center as far as colors, color scheme.
Real quick follow-up question. Is there bike parking?
Yes, there is. They have one bike rack, which is conforming to the zoning code. One bicycle stall per 1,500 square feet. Let me see if I could find it. It is located, I believe, right here somewhere.
Okay, thank you.
Plus, the Rossmore Shopping Center has additional biking stalls also.
Commissioner Quok.
Gerardo, if you could go back to the interior floor plan. I just wanted to orient myself how it looks with respect, because I'm having a little bit of trouble visualizing the building and where it is with respect to the driveway and the front entrance.
Okay.
So is the driveway, for example, if we were looking on the upper right where the floor plan is, do the cars pass on the backside, which would be the top of the picture?
Yes, this is north, so they pass through here. This is where the, the, the drive-through window is located right here, and so that's like right here.
And then, so then the, the side that faces the Chevrons at the bottom of the picture?
This is, this is the entrance right here.
That's where the walk?
Where the outdoor patio is, yeah.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work getting this together. And I will just say, I am a Rossmore resident. I'm very familiar with this shopping center. I was excited to see that there had been modifications made in the color scheme to be more compliant with the shopping center. But I'm personally having trouble seeing how this is, is, the, the shopping center colors in my mind are more beige and gray and whatever. So I just wasn't, they're softened, but just not quite maybe as much as I thought they might be in feedback, so.
They did soften this color right here. Cedar gray from Murly Gray, that matches the Rossmore Shopping Center. That was one of the concerns. They have addressed it. They are matching the standards of, the Design Review standards from the city, so.
I think the dark pillar is the thing that's hard. I mean, I see they softened it to gray instead of black, but.
Right.
I'm just trying to figure out how that will look, so, thank you.
Assistant Amy.
I don't know if this is a now or later, but I was, I don't know if the applicant brought Kim Lee Horn.
Where's Mr. Greve?
Was it, was it the applicant that hired Kim Lee Horn, or was it the city to do the queuing analysis in traffic?
Oh, it was the applicant, I'm sorry. Yes, it wasn't the city, yes.
Are they, is, should I ask for that after the applicant does their applicant there?
Yes.
Okay. I, I'm going to ask you.
Okay.
A little traffic engineering.
Okay.
I understand, well, actually, I'll ask that question to the applicant, but, so it sounds like for the queuing study, there was three sites that were taken. I was, to be honest with you, when I kind of looked at it, I was a little bit, I figured that, that Kim Lee Horn would have chosen also Danville, but I think Danville's, because Danville has a drive-through also, and it's behind, it's in front of residential also, so that's why, so that's question number one, but I'm wondering if, because that's a cantina, and this is not. So that's question number one. So if I'm understanding correctly, the concern from the residents, it's about safety, the additional driving. So what I'm seeing here is that we took three different, we took breakfast, lunch, and commute pick hour, peak hour dinner in order to get the queuing of how the tail is going to be of all the drivers. And I think there was only one instance, it sounds like the site is able to handle nine vehicles stacked up.
Correct.
And there was, but technically, the queuing is eight, but it can handle because the drive, the pickup window is so far that it fits that additional. So if I'm not mistaken, in using other similar sized restaurants in, in this area, that's how this queuing was built.
Yeah, so speaking to the applicant regarding the, the queuing analysis, usually Taco Bell sites are, I wrote it down, I think it's like six to seven for vehicles, and they have provided nine.
Yeah.
Which is more than enough. But I'll let Mr. Greve, when he comes up here for questions, he can, he can, he can speak to that.
Perfect, thank you.
For the questions of staff, Commissioner Strongman.
Yeah, one more last question. It was a question about the target audience of this restaurant. What is the target audience?
As part of their business plan, I don't think they have a target audience, honestly.
Okay, thank you.
But Mr. Greve probably has an answer to that. Okay.
Anything else? Thank you very much. I invite the applicant to come speak. You have up to 10 minutes to present.
Thank you guys for having me tonight. Perfect. My name's Henry Greve, representing Diversified Restaurant Group and Taco Bell. So this is our site plan we just saw, a little bit more simplified. This is showing the trees. Gerardo went over what the tree plan looks like a little earlier. I don't want to be repetitive and hold you guys up. I would rather answer important questions that you guys have for, you know, me and the rest of my team. Let's talk about the site planning constraints, the Safeway protected area. Gerardo touched on this a little bit. The landlord and Safeway have an agreement in place about what is and what is not Safeway's protected area. And we don't have much as a tenant that we can do to go around this. That is essentially out of our hands or our control. The central sanitary easement, there's no building allowed over the existing sewer main run. It's a foundational issue and a retention issue. This essentially left our plans and our site plan to only work in this position. We went back, you know, I'd say probably about 15 times with different site plans over the entire process, and we landed on this one, and this is the site plan that works. And I'm, you know, pretty sure that this is the only site plan that works. The protected trees concerns have been addressed. Gerardo talked about that a little bit. The drive aisles can't really be changed. The property of the south, which is the Chevron, has, is its own entity. The landlord is not part of that. So we don't have much control over how we, you know, work with them. So more traffic. The project was approved in 2019 for a 2,000 square foot fast food restaurant. You know, we're planning a 1,400 square foot restaurant here. Gerardo touched on the parking. Like he said, you know, we're in full compliance with the parking of the center, and we, we meet all of those regulations. The traffic circulation, we are hoping, and, you know, the data we've seen says that, you know, you'll be entering the center rather than going down the Rossmore Drive or Parkway more often than not. So driving through the center is the more likely path of travel. And then the queuing, the traffic queuing that we talked about a little bit earlier with the car stacks. Yes, we do have room for nine cars in the stack, and we, we think, and we hope, that we can have no more than six cars in our stack at any time. That's what we see at restaurants that we work with and restaurants that we run as a comparison. But obviously, if we have to go over that, we have the wiggle room to do so. We don't expect this to be, you know, a super busy Taco Bell, to be completely frank. This is going to be a smaller town Taco Bell with some feel to it. The trees, we talked about that. We made all of the changes that were recommended to us. The signage, we were told that we had too much signage, so now we only have one sign facing the Chevron. The building colors now match the rest of the center in, in response to, you know, that dark gray. You know, Starbucks has the same color scheme, and Starbucks has a drive-through as well, and so does Safeway. The building exhaust, there were some concerns over the smells that the building might give off. Our response is that all of our food is already, becomes cooked, it's sous vide beforehand, so, you know, if you don't like the smell of fresh tacos, then I think that's on you. The hours, we've adjusted our hours until midnight per the request of the Review Commission. And then the trash, our update is that, you know, we can, we can move it around and we can adjust as necessary. We don't see this being an issue. You know, we do this at all of our restaurants. So yeah, thank you guys for taking the time.
Questions of the applicant?
Well, talked about changing the hours. Is that different than the business plan you put in the packet here?
I believe it was 1:00 previously, and now it is midnight.
Okay. Same for Friday and Saturday night?
What was that?
Same for Friday and Saturday night?
I believe so, yes.
Mr. Quok.
All right, thank you so much for coming to give us the presentation. I was hoping to understand a little bit more about how Taco Bell, how this proposed Taco Bell would interact with the community, because my understanding is, when I first read the proposal, I thought like, oh, it's very interesting, but the color scheme is also very striking. And the impression that it gives me is quite different than what I was expecting for Taco Bell in the area. So if you could speak a little bit more to the types of customers that you anticipate having at the Taco Bell?
Yeah.
Maybe it would help me understand the business plan a little bit better.
Sure. Yeah, we, we service to everyone in the community, you know, from ages, you know, 15 to 95. That's our target audience, you know. We want people to eat at our restaurant, we want people to enjoy it. So that is our business plan. And then speaking to the design of the Taco Bell, you know, we have conformed with the colors of the center. You know, we'd like to keep a little bit of kind of the Taco Bell feel, and that's where the purple comes into play. We don't want it to be, you know, everything just mute. I think, you know, businesses should have their own touch.
Would you be open to adjusting the business hours even so that it closes earlier than 12:00 midnight?
I think we would entertain it, and we would talk about it and get back.
Okay, all right.
What, what do you recommend?
Well, it's just because the, the benchmark for the, the business hours was to set to match to Safeway, which was 12:00 AM. And it wasn't really set on anything in terms of the expected customers at Taco Bell itself. So for me, I just wanted to understand the benchmark for that. It's, it seems a little bit more like a reference to a separate business entirely rather than what Taco Bell expects its customer flow to be throughout the week.
Yeah, I think when we're talking about business late night, more often than not, it's going to be a lot of the delivery and the pickup business is what we see at most of our Taco Bells.
Okay. So then that kind of plays into the mobile order pickup aspect of the drive-through?
Right.
Where if people are ordering, say on DoorDash or whatever, whatever other mobile apps are being used?
Right.
Then the restaurant is kind of intended to help serve as a pickup point for people that might be delivering to other parts of the city? Okay.
Yeah, it could be, right? It's hard to tell or to know ahead of time, you know, what the full use of the restaurant is. Yeah, it could be, right? It's hard to tell or to know ahead of time, you know, what the full use of the restaurant is, right? We don't know the exact share of, you know, true, you know, drive-through customers to mobile pickup orders to customers that come in, right? That's why we kind of wanted to give the customer any of the options, right? There's a pickup window, there's a mobile pickup window, there's a drive-through option, there's an option to sit outside, there's an option to sit inside. So, like I said, we're trying to service everyone.
Okay, I appreciate the thoughtful answers.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Could we, can we go back to the elevation of the east elevation?
Which elevation would you like?
The east elevation, I think you referred to it as the back of the building. In a sense, this doesn't really have a back since the front faces the
Right.
parking area and the back actually is what you see as you drive in to Rossmore Parkway. So yeah, the one on the lower left here, or in upper left. I'm wondering if, I'm right, right now, yeah, it's the one on the upper left without the sign. Basically, it's, it's a blank wall and a blank tower.
Right.
And it looks like a utility door, a metal door or whatever there. And that's the first impression that people have of Taco Bell coming in.
Right.
Did, did you consider doing something there?
Well, we did have our Taco Bell signage and we were told to take it down, so.
I was thinking of something more architectural. As I say, it's, it's blank.
Right. And I think that part of it was that they didn't want as much signage and there was, wanted to be more conforming to the center was the problem. And, you know, if we felt like we were being told to, you know, put more pizzazz and more of our, you know, touch as Taco Bell on the building, you know, we would have loved to do that. But that wasn't what we heard as much as at the la, at the last meeting, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Count.
So can we go back to the circulation map? So I am less, I don't live over there, so I'm less familiar, but I did drive through the area and tried out the Starbucks drive-through to get a sense of if there's these multiple drive-throughs going, right? So yeah, this, at the Starbucks drive-through with not very many cars, they were stopped at the, the one, cars in front of me were stopped at the menu.
Right.
Where you order and there's plenty of space in front of them, right? But they're sort of taking their time to order and, and that meant with only two cars in front of me, I was already sticking out into, I don't know where, right?
Right.
Towards the gas station. And, and cars can, can enter that drive-through from both sides. So I guess I'm thinking so similarly over here, if, if it backs up, where is it backing up into? Are the cars coming from both sides in a similar fashion or do they?
So yeah, I hear your concern. Well, you know, like I said, we are set to have nine cars in the stack. We never expect to have more than six. The one thing that might, you know, help you kind of understand our point of view is that we have the fastest time in the, complete in all of the QSR industry with less than three minutes, you know, order to the time you get your food. And I, you know, to make a generalization, you know, more people probably use the drive-through at Starbucks than at Taco Bell. So we feel really comfortable about this. This isn't a store. We feel like we're going to, you know, have people flowing in and out of the door. I'm just going to be frank, right? We don't think that this is going to be that type of store. And we don't expect to be overflowing with traffic. That'd be amazing, but I don't think that's the intent with this store.
So just in terms of the direction of the entrance?
Yeah.
So they would, it would come in?
You've only got one choice to go in, so that's where the overflow would be, up in that corner.
But can you turn into the drive-through entrance, turn right or left into it?
So are you saying when you're leaving the drive-through?
When you're coming, when you're coming in, entering.
So you can turn right into the drive-through?
But if you were to drive up Rossmore Parkway, turn left at the entrance after the Taco Bell?
Right, yeah, you could do that.
Can you turn left?
You could do that.
So it could back up, if it were to back up, it could back up in either, in either direction and?
Yeah, but in my, in my mind and when we were laying this thing out, we had our buffer, right, of three cars. Plus it would probably take another two cars to be, you know, pushing into that Safeway area was our thought process.
Right.
So that would put us at double what we'd ever expected to hit the all-time high essentially. And we feel pretty good about that not affecting the center.
Okay, and then when people come with the mobile order parking, they would park and they'd walk across where most cars come in?
Park how you would at any, you know, if you're going to pick up any food, right? You walk up to the door, it's in a, in a cubby or whatever we end up doing, right? Drop your order, walk back to your car.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Quoc.
Another question. So listening to the responses, I'm starting to get the impression that it sounds like a majority of the customers will be arriving by car.
Yeah.
Mostly for mobile order pickup. And so I'm thinking about the color scheme in terms of how Taco Bell intends to kind of be situated in the area. So if, because when I see the dark colors, it makes me think, I initially thought, oh, this was going to be a dine-in restaurant, sit-in restaurant. But with the nine tables in the inside of the building and a large part of the parcel devoted to the drive-through, it kind of seems to me like Taco Bell is trying to be as unobtrusive as possible, especially during the night hours where the dark colors can't really be seen. So it's not meant to be more like a draw for the community to dine in, but rather as a place to pick up food and go.
Yeah, I'm, Gerardo, can you pull up that lighting package that we have? That might help a little bit to kind of show, you know, what we're adding to what was, you know, a dark parking lot. So we're planning to have, you know, we're planning to have lights on all these parts. So down there in the left-hand corner, up on the right, when you're coming off Rossmore Parkway, you know, a light dividing the drive-through and then, you know, five different lights on the Taco Bell. So there should be more light here than there ever was in the parking lot, is the thought.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? Mr. Moran.
A quick one.
Yeah.
You alluded to this and you said, you know, you've got the mobile, drive-through, dine-in because you kind of don't know
Yeah.
what's going to come. But is there any sense, you know, just in the industry in general or other Taco Bells that I don't know if you're, you know, involved with, about the percentage just generally? You know, I know
Yeah.
we're moving into the, the dine-in, the app culture and so forth, but can you just talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, 100%. You know, I think COVID changed a lot of things for everyone. And I think that this industry changed a lot during COVID. So we've seen a big uptick in, you know, app usage as well as drive-throughs. You know, people more often than not now want to pick up their food, go back to their house, enjoy their food, you know, in the presence of their family, right? So, and is, you know, if that's someone picking it up for them or them picking it up, that's what the trends are showing, right? It's been pretty steady since COVID, but, you know, we don't really build new Taco Bells now without a drive-through.
Or I would imagine less seating these days than maybe?
Yeah, less, less seating for sure, but it's, you know, we, it's still a big part of our restaurant.
If you had to, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you know, what's the general, how many, if you got 100 people in a day, how many people are doing the mobile? How many are driving through and how many are sitting down?
It's really, it is really tough to say. It really just depends on, once you're open, you know, what happens, right? We've got stores that are, you know, in the 90s for delivery and then there's stores in the, that are in the 90s for sit-down. So you really don't know. You can try to make all these grand predictions and guesses on what you think is going to happen. But until you're actually there and you've been operating for six months or a year, you, there's no way of telling.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
I'll open it to public to comment. If you wish to comment, you can fill out a speaker card. But if you haven't done that yet, but you wish to comment, you can come forward to the podium. You have two minutes to speak. Going once? Okay.
Hello, everybody. I had a question that didn't get asked and that was, they were closing at midnight, but I was just wondering if the drive-through
Excuse me, can you introduce yourself first?
Pardon me?
Can you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, sure. My name's Jeff Shane and I live at 1930 Old Oak Drive. Lived in the neighborhood for 13 years with my wife and two kids. So I was wondering what time the drive-through closed. Is that open till midnight or is that?
Well, we'll, we'll ask, we'll ask that when
Okay. "We hope the planning commission will not approve Taco Bell's request for a drive-through restaurant in the Rossmore Shopping Center. This section of this shopping center is already congested with cars and pedestrians. Many of the pedestrians are senior citizens with limited mobility and this additional traffic would seem to pose a safety hazard. The adjacent section of Rossmore Parkway is crowded with overflow parking from adjacent businesses and this will likely add to the congestion. Further, Taco Bell is not an upscale or even a mid-level restaurant and we don't want it in our neighborhood." As I'm sure you all would also, many of you would have that same feeling if you lived a few hundred feet from a fast food restaurant in Walnut Creek that has historically been very anti-fast food restaurants. Thank you.
Any other speakers?
Hello, Jonathan Bates. I'm at 1995 Honey Locust Court. I am the closest house to this Taco Bell. I've lived there 25 years and of all 25 years, we've gone to almost every planning meeting here. And when the JCC was there, we know what's going on in our neighborhood and honestly, our worst nightmare is about to come true. If these guys have their way, we get a Taco Bell and they're going to want that drive-through open until 2:00 AM because that's what they advertise. I'd like to point out a mistake on one of your slides. Safeway's not been open until midnight since before COVID. They are not open till midnight. They're open to 10:00 PM at the latest. Not even on weekends is it midnight. So if you're going to compare, let's say 10:00 PM. Couple of other concerns apart from
The clock wasn't reset when you spoke. You have a minute and 10 seconds left.
Okay. Apart from what it's going to do to my property value, I can't predict, but I can only think it's bad. Number two is, I already have a big problem with trash. It blows up the valley and it blows in my yard. I get trash from Crumble, I get trash from Safeway, now I'm going to get a ton of trash from Taco Bell. The reality of the Taco Bell drive-through is, people go to Taco Bell, they order their food, they eat it in the car. Half the time, they drop it right out of the car and it's going to end up on my fence or in my yard. I'm not happy about that. So I'd really like you to deny this request. I'd also like to get a quick review of any enhanced security in the shopping center. There's one security guard, uniformed with one car right now. That's all they have. I would suggest we increase that number with a drive-through that they're going to lobby to keep open until midnight. This is going to be a problem. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm the wife of John. I live at 1995 Honey Locust Court, Karen Bates. We've been there for 25 years and I just wanted to comment that when they say that they're matching the Starbucks, we came to the meetings when they built the Starbucks and we asked that they camouflage it somewhat, so they put the stone on it, it looks nice. And there are plants and there's like a rack where ivy can grow up the side of the building. This is so hideous. It, there's a reason they don't make purple and black buildings in America. Purple and black and the towers. I don't understand why. I know it's corporate, but why that can't be modified if it has to go in? And I'm just very worried that when you, when, when we invite people to our neighborhood, we'll have to say, turn at the Taco Bell. And it's going to be that ugly, awful Taco, and just the fact that we would be saying that is going to lower our property values. And it just does not fit in with the feel of our quiet Rossmore Shopping Center. Thank you.
Any other speakers?
Hi, I'm Terry McDonald. I had 1928 tortoise place, myself and my family, my young children. Been there 28 years. Everyone seems to forget, we are the homes right behind the Safeway there. We have one way to egress is Old Oak Drive. No one brought up, but there has been issue at the Chase Bank. Senior citizen unfortunately actually drove through the front of it. Our, my children and I, we bike ride and we walk our three dogs. There's a lot of issue. Again, a drive-through for a Taco Bell is ridiculous in that area. And again, they say about heating the food up. Yes, there's going to be smell from the machinery, the refrigeration, everything as well. But the safety is a big, major concern. When I purchased 28 years ago, I was not with children, I was not married at the time. The real estate even said, you've got to be extra cautious. It's an area, there is families, there is seniors, we respect that and it's a wonderful community, but that's going to cause an additional element coming in. And again, the trash, the people at midnight, we have that park right there at Old Oak Drive. There's a lot of people that are there, they're doing illegal activity. I've had to call the cops. Will take a walk in the evening. It's very, very, not a good element as far as to add another fast food place. I don't think that the drive-through has been taken into consideration. Again, midnight or a 2:00 AM is ridiculous. That shopping center, even at midnight, if you recall, that Safeway did have a armed robbery. I guess they stole, according to Nextdoor, alcohol and everything. That was something that came up, I guess, within the last six months or year as well. Again, this is not the place for Taco Bell. Again, you can talk even to the owners. I've spoken to El Jardine, it's another restaurant in the shopping center. And they were shaking their head. They could not believe that the city council of Walnut Creek would impose something like this. Again, we can ask your consideration. Again, there is children. I've got my two young sons as well. They would have loved to be able to speak. It's not a place for this. So I can ask you to please reconsider to use it for some other use. Thank you.
Can I, can I ask you, excuse me, I have a question? I have a question, ma'am? Even in case there's a security, safety issues there.
Correct.
What I don't understand is why you think apparently that Taco Bell would exacerbate that.
As far as for security, as far as 12:00 AM or 2:00 AM to have people coming in and out?
It's the hours.
The hours and also too, like I said, it's not really meant for, again, the drive-through. That is going to be chaos. Does anybody want to see pictures of the Chase Bank? And I know the senior citizen got hurt. I don't know the whole particulars of it, but it was disgusting. The whole entire storefront of Chase Bank was smashed in. So again, this is going to be chaos with regards to the drive-through and everything. And I told you, there was one neighborhood person, she's not here this evening, she actually is another court up. She got hit badly just driving our Old Oak Drive right by the Chevron station. She got hit by, again, unfortunately was a senior, but they pulled out. It's not a good location to have any type of drive-through. It's going to be chaotic.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this matter? If you do want to speak on this matter, you might kind of If you do want to speak on this matter, you might kind of queue up, please. You might queue up behind the current speaker so that we don't have to wait between each person.
Hello, planning commission. My name is Ann Hatanaka. I live at 1982 Sunin Court in the community right behind Safeway. I hope you've been to Tice Valley. Our community is a small, quaint community. There's a lot of families there. It's not a community that is a destination. It's for folks who actually live and reside there. We decided to move to Tice Valley because of the ambiance. It is a nice valley compared to our sister neighborhoods east of the freeway. We're not a thoroughfare. We're not, we don't have freeway access. We don't have a Treat Boulevard or an Ignacio Valley Boulevard. We often see bikers driving through and riding their bikes through Tice Valley. So what I'm asking the commission to understand is that this is a really unique community, and we have a nice ambiance, and so we hope that whatever development there might be that you would approve would fit into the nature. 27-foot towers painted black on a building definitely is a statement. It's a brand for a retailer, and I understand the retail community, we all, you know, have brands that we associate with, but maybe this brand really doesn't fit into our community. If you look at where the other Taco Bells are situated, they're all situated near a freeway entrance and a freeway exit for ease of access. I think there was even some comment that there may be only takeout for this retail site, so I don't know in a year or two would there be a viable business, and will we be ending up with an empty building that we have to look at because it couldn't sustain either the rent or the taxes or whatever. So please consider our pleas and keep our community the great community that it is and unique.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bettina Uno. I live at 1984 Sunin Court, and I've been a resident at our house in our nice little neighborhood for 33 years. So I've seen the Rossmore Parkway develop over the years, and I do want to say that I have witnessed so many different accidents occurring there. We see, because we are near Rossmore, we do have a lot of elderly people living there, and I've seen fender benders, people driving on the wrong side of the road. I've just witnessed several accidents, and there are, you know, people riding their golf carts down to the Safeway, and so I really feel that having the Taco Bell there will really be a dangerous spot. I don't think we need any more junk food, unhealthy foods coming to Walnut Creek, and I feel bad for El Jardan, which we should be supporting. We should be supporting small local businesses that make authentic Mexican food, not frozen sous vide food coming in from who knows where. Also, I'm concerned because you said you don't expect high-volume business, then why are you spending all this money to construct a building, make new driveways, tear out trees, yet you can't really say that this is going to be a viable business? If you look at the Taco Bell that was set up in Maraga, which I feel is very similar to our little neighborhood behind the shopping center, they have since closed due to slow or no business. Also, as Ann stated earlier, we are not a freeway or main thoroughway like Ignacio Valley or Treat Boulevard. And so the people who come to our little neighborhood live there. People aren't out there to shop, it's, they're just there, excuse me, not to go out to the fast-food restaurants. So I just want to thank you for listening, and I hope you do not approve of the Taco Bell. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Last call, if anybody else would like to speak. Okay. You've got more cards? I have some cards here, they might be from the applicant's group, I'm not sure, but Blanca?
Hi, everybody. So my name is Blanca Bohorcas. I live here in Walnut Creek, 1300 Door, Apartment 203. So I come into, I would like to open one Taco Bell from here because my first job is Badvee. I work in Badvee, I'm per se chef over there, so, but you know what? I, California's too expensive for everything, so I'm a single mom, so I need two jobs. And then, and then for here, it's too close for my, for my other job. So now, if you open one restaurant here in Walnut Creek, Taco Bell, so I'm moving from here, because my other one, I need to dry 40 minutes because part of it's like, it's a lot of traffic. It's a lot of traffic every day I spend, a lot of time I spend, and so it's so tired every day when I go to my other Taco Bell. Please think about it for everything. For me, that's more better because I live in here, and then I work in here in my other job, so for me, that's more good for me. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another card, and there's no requirement to speak, but I'm just reading the names on the cards. If you'd like to come up, let us know. Giovanni Rodriguez?
Hi, everybody. My name is Giovanni Rodriguez, and I am the director of operations with DRG. So we hear all your concerns, and we want you to be open. I know you guys have something against Taco Bell, but our brand is Diversified Restaurant Group, and we take pride in the communities that we are. This is why these designs wanted to comply with everything. Our team takes pride in what they do. We do have systems in place for cleaning the parking lot every hour, making sure that our training is up to date with everybody that's working there. We listen to anybody suggesting in the community that how can we improve and make things better. So again, we're not just Taco Bell. The brand is Diversified Restaurant Group. We do have a scholarship for the students that work with us. We also have a charity that's called DRG for our employees, that's by our employees. So again, it's not just Taco Bell, it's DRG, and I want you guys to take that in consideration.
Thank you. Ombre? Is it Andre or Ombre? And again, there's no requirement.
Hi, my name is Ambri, and I'm the neighbor of Blanca. I think that it's really important, I know that you guys don't like really Taco Bell, but I feel it's really, like, you can't compare any Taco Bell. Maybe you already had a bad experience with one Taco Bell before, but that's not why you can't compare any Taco Bell. Like me, as a worker at Taco Bell, as a shift leader, I try always to take care of it, then we have fresh food. And compared to other, like, fast-food restaurants like McDonald's, Jack in the Box, we have, I feel, like, the freshest food because we always try to have fresh vegetables, fresh meat, and we're always trying to take care of our customers, and for the drive-through, for the cleaning, for the outside, we clean every hours. I'm trying to clean every hours for our customers who come into drive-through and also inside have like a space, you know, where it's clean, and they can be like at home, basically, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more cards? No? That's it. All right. Any other speakers on this matter? If not, I'll ask the applicant to, oh, we've got one more.
Welcome. My name is Giovanni Saligan, and thank you guys for hearing us out. I've had a wonderful experience with DRG. I've provided, I've had a lot of training, they provided a lot of training. I've trained myself, a lot of employees that have gone on to college, learned leadership skills with us. We have a program like Giovanni said, which is called DRG Cares. We help families in need, employees that work for us, single moms, any, you know, issues. We've had somebody who had issues with rent. The company gathered everything up, helped them. They're doing well now, but, you know, through our DRG program, DRG Cares, they were helped. We also have a scholarship program, which helps our employees that are looking to go on to college or higher education. We help them with scholarships, depending on, we even sometimes go as far as placing them in work within the company, you know? So they, we do, they do a lot of things that help not only the employees, but the community as well. We have something called an MIC routine, which is like a 360 cleaning routine for all of our managers, shift leads, employees. Our parking lots are clean, you drive by a Taco Bell, you'll see somebody cleaning, you know? Right time, you'll see somebody out there picking up trash in the, you know, in the parking lot, making sure the windows are clean, the bathrooms are clean. We have a plan in place for that. I do, I do hear you guys out, I hear your concerns, but in the places that I've been, I've been in multiple Taco Bells in different areas like Hillcrest, Martinez, Concord, and I feel like the community has embraced us. We have a lot of customers that come through, drive-through specifically, single moms, parents, coaches, people that are on the go, and they just want to pick up a burrito and something to drink because they're on their job to San Francisco. I've had a ton of people come through drive-through from all walks of life, so we don't have a particular group that just, that particular group is going to go to Taco Bell. It's very diverse. So anyway, those are my two cents, and thank you guys for hearing us out, okay?
If you haven't filled out a card, if you pick one up in the, you've got a card. Okay, thank you. All right. And I will ask the applicant if you'd like to make any comments on the issues that have been raised. Excuse me, the applicant? Speaking on behalf of the applicant?
Yeah.
You have five minutes.
Okay. So I'm Cody Fisher, I'm the director of construction.
You direct your comments here.
Okay. I'm the director of construction. We heard the concerns in the last meeting about the color scheme, landscape, and trees. We really went back and tried to do everything in our power to be a partner, right, and make the necessary changes. The color scheme really does match what's there. I think the pictures don't show it as well. The beige, it's not a black, it's a gray. So we've really tried to incorporate and meet those. In terms of the landscape, we've really tried to save the trees. The one tree that's in need is Tree 17. And then in terms of the landscape, we're doing well beyond that. We have landscape all around the building. We do have lattice like Starbucks for ivy and places like that, so we're doing everything we can to be a partner and be a part of the community and be a part of the center and address the needs that you guys are bringing up. So that's just what I want to address.
Thank you. All right. I'll bring it back here if there are questions for the applicant or the staff or discussion.
I just recall one person speaking asked for clarification on the hours of the drive-through. Does that match the hours of the restaurant? The question was the hours, what are the hours of the drive-through? Does that, and my modification is, do they match the hours of the restaurant?
They match, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and the Starbucks is open until midnight.
Thank you.
Do you know about the Safeway? Whether that is all-
Sorry, the Safeway is what I meant.
It's open until midnight.
Safeway is midnight, and so is our proposed midnight for the Taco Bell. Yeah, okay. It says online that it's midnight.
So just within our draft resolution on page four, it says the proposed hours for the eating and drinking establishment are Sunday through Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. The dining room area will close at 12:00 a.m. daily with only the drive-up takeout window open until 2:00 a.m. So I think if it's different than that, we would need to make the changes to the draft resolution.
That's correct. The original business plan did have that, and the drive-through open until 2:00 a.m., but the dining room area closing at 12:00 a.m. But as Mr. Greaves stated today, they are closing both at 12:00 a.m., and the business plan would be updated to reflect that.
Excuse me. Safeway Online, we opened up all the neighbors. If you want us to read it, it says Safeway at Rossmore in Walnut Creek, specifically 1972 Tice Valley Boulevard, is open from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Thank you.
Every day of the week. This applies to all days of the week. The store offers the website.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Quark?
So going back to the color scheme, I understand that the design review commission did suggest to work to see if the color scheme could blend in with the shopping center more. If we were, because I was thinking, I know the shopping center is more of a brown, beige, light color. It's a very, it blends in well with the hills in the summertime, because the hills tend to be a nice golden, grassy color. And so if we were to suggest a color scheme that in place of the cyberspace, we use colors that are more in the beige or golden color scheme, is that something that's workable? Because I know that the Taco Bell that's up from where I live is a much more yellow and orange scheme.
Why don't you come to the podium? I have a question for you as well, so.
Yeah, so the Taco Bell, I'm sure you're referring is probably an older-designed Taco Bell, correct? Yeah, so it's just an older design. It's what corporate wanted back then, when it was built. And, you know, as a franchisee, we don't have as much say over what we can do. We're given, you know, panels and colors of what we're told we're allotted and allowed to do, right? And we, you know, tried to do that to the best of our ability to meet what we were told in our previous meeting and try to conform to the center.
Okay, so just so I understand, this is a franchise arrangement?
Yes, we are Taco Bell franchisees.
Taco Bell franchisees.
Yeah, we are Diversified Restaurant Group, which is a Taco Bell franchisee of Taco Bell Corporation.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
So what I want to ask is the, so we have, at least a conjecture, and supported by some evidence, that Safeway doesn't close at midnight. And if it turns out that in fact it does close at 8:00 or 10:00 o'clock, would that cause you to rethink your closing time?
I think the closing time's just going to be subject to, you know, is it super busy on a Wednesday night? You know, maybe we close earlier, right? Maybe on a Saturday, you know, we feel like it should be open until midnight. I think it's a day-by-day, case-by-case basis, and we were under the impression that it was midnight for the Safeway.
So, and your proposal, though, is that dining room and the store, the entire store would close at midnight?
Yeah, that's the plan.
Okay.
And we've already, you know, we came down from 2:00 in the morning initially down to midnight, so we felt like we were making a pretty strong compromise closing two hours earlier. And, you know, this center's most likely going to be a lot of pickup at that time, right? Like you guys said, it's a little bit older of a community, right? So you're probably not going to have a whole lot of people walking around and doing stuff at midnight over there. So it's going to be heavy, you know, mobile order and heavy delivery.
Do you know the closing times of other stores in the shopping center?
Of others? What stores?
I mean, besides the Safeway and the Starbucks?
No, I do not. Those are the drive-throughs.
Okay. Any questions, the applicant at this point? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
And I'll open up for discussion. Question or needing?
So many thoughts. Do you think it'd be possible to open up sheet C5.0? Or no?
C5.
C5.0? Oh.
Is that the site plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the site plan.
It's just a site plan.
Black and white one?
So, the reason I wanted to bring that up to, just, well, because I have engineering in my brain right now, um, I wanted to quickly, I just want to make sure I understand for the...
Big one.
Yeah, I don't know if there's any way to make that guy bigger.
Yeah.
So, here's what I'm seeing with the existing on the right, which is kind of perfect. There's always a safety concern whenever you open up or you create driveways of any sort to a main driveway. So that, that's like engineering 101. So, what I'm seeing here is that, at least one positive thing, is that we don't have another opening directly to Rossmore Parkway, so we're keeping the two existing. The other thing that I'm seeing is that the safest thing from a traffic perspective, I don't know if the traffic and city traffic engineer is here, but stop signs are the best, because it forces you to stop. It's not a light, there's no confusion, you have to stop. So on another positive note, I'm seeing that you have, you ha, there is a physical stop once you pick up your food. You can't just decide, you know what, I was just kidding, I'm going to do an order and run, there's a, there's a stop there. There's also a stop if you enter in. So, on both ends. The other part that I was kind of, because I'm hearing everything about Chase, which is awful, because I have very small kids, um, preschool and, and a first grader. So, um... The, there was, in this existing area, there was, um, there was a directional drive aisle that is where the building is going now, because I was trying to figure out, are we adding, how is the flow being added? And so essentially, if you can imagine, since there was an in and out to directional where that building is, essentially, we're almost splitting it up between an island, so that you have that, you have the same. What, what we're adding in is that additional stop if people make the oopsie off Rossmore Parkway. So that's kind of what I'm, um, the only other thing, correct me if I'm wrong, but things that usually slow down cars, especially coming in from Rossmore Parkway, are we adding in a new directional crosswalk on this, on the west side? Do I see that to the existing island? Where it says, but below the utility easement on the page left? That, right there, is that new? Because that would be an added safety element that would naturally, and to, to be frank, when cars turn in, there's an acceleration, there's a, there's a linear length that you need to accelerate to higher speeds. And so if that, if that crosswalk is, is actually new, then it's going to slow people down, especially if, if it was even a crosswalk that had a light, so it kind of lights up when people are driving. Do you guys see that?
I'm going to have him move that, see if we can see the paint on the, if there's a stop bar there.
Because I don't... You know, like right to the right of the ten-foot utility easement. I can't tell if that's exist, yeah, that guy, I can't tell if it's existing? It's existing? Because then, and I, and I, and I would pose this, one thing that you could do to slow people down, because you would, they would have something else to go into, if, because the applicant is saying, right, according to their traffic engineer, that everything would be accessed from internally. So that means to the right of Chevron, you could add something there to, if somebody is crossing, to slow people down. This is why I was hoping like there was some sort of like, Kimmy Horn was frankly here to be able to answer some of these questions, because they would have looked at this, um, when they were looking at the queuing. So that was the, um, so if there is truly more than, um, sorry, I don't even know what point I'm at, but the other point for the little squawk box thing that you were talking about, Commissioner Strongman? There is, I did like that, the fact that there's a queuing length of one, two, three cars behind it. Because you can kind of see those cars to the left. And then, from a safety perspective, if they were to, if they were to then queue up more that, like what you were saying, in theory, they would stop at the, um, in front of the trash bin. So, I suppose you would, you could cause up a jam for people trying to back out of those parking spaces. But at least it's not queuing up into a fast, like, main thoroughway. So that's kind of like what I'm trying to figure out, is like, is this going to be safe? So those are kind of the, some of the, um, items that I'm looking at. Obviously, I can see there's a ton of landscaping, and you have your sustainability with your treatment that's needed, frankly, by law.
I'll find out.
The, the one comment I will make about architecture is that the box form is very box with flat, flat, is it a TPO roof? Is very modern versus traditional roofs are more, now, I'm not saying to go to that roof, but you look at the Starbucks, there's a lot of stone. And I went to go check some of the other Taco Bells that were, that the applicant chose to use as part of their queuing. And you look at the four, six, seven, four Clayton Road, and they have this beautiful Spanish tile along the front of the Taco Bell with these Spanish embezzlements, almost like cornices on, on, on these like arched, um, so I think that there is a way to not have it be a hideous building. With regards to, you know, the tower, I saw, so, um, it, I don't think, I think it might look like a tower, but it doesn't seem, when, when you actually look at the architectural elevations, um, there's only one item of the building that the parapet is to twenty-seven feet high, which is less than a three-story townhome, but the rest of the height to the parapet is twenty feet. So that's, that's kind of nice to know that it's not towering, because I, I heard that, a lot of that feedback, right, of like, we don't want anything in that tower. So the first thing I wanted to do is kind of measure what the two elements of the building was. So the majority of it is a twenty-foot height to the parapet, which is essentially, if you're taking like, it's a two, it's essentially, it's a two-story townhome, if you think about it with, with ten-foot plates. The one thing that I would, since, since architecture is being spoken about a lot, I frankly don't see how this building emulates the other. I, 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 I understand that from a branding perspective, that everyone has their own brands. I think it would be nice, instead of the Hardy board, to potentially add some of those stone elements that kind of draw out Starbucks, if it is going to have that modern frame. But, anyways, I just wanted to touch on safety, architecture, my, my thoughts, and staff, if I'm, if I'm reading the engineering drawings incorrectly, like, please, correct me.
Did, uh, do you have any questions in that for the applicant, or just?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm just, I wanted to kind of, to have the discussion with the team here.
I will officially close the public hearing at this point. And, uh, ask for other comments. Commissioner Quoc.
Could I please ask that you move the slide deck to the page that the staff report says what the planning commission's being asked to do tonight?
You mean the recommendations, or?
What are we being asked to approve? There you go, thank you. Oh, wait, no. There you go. There it is, thank you. And I ask this just to clarify what the planning commission's role is. We need to look at the sequoet determination, the continual, conditional use permits, and the design review. And so, while there's a lot of discussion about what business is going into the shopping center, that is really the business of the shopping center, uh, and not of the planning commission. So, um, I just wanted to get us focused on what is the task at hand here. Thank you.
That's correct. Commissioner Strongman?
Clarification, if we get to a vote with a motion, what hours are we approving for this applicant?
I was actually looking at the resolution to find where that is mentioned.
Yeah, that's where I was reading, from the resolution, it's on page four.
Thank you. My suggestion, if there's, if there are some inconsistencies there, that the, whoever makes the motion has the, may make the hours.
Yeah, because attachment three says 2:00 AM.
And so does the resolution.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think as far as the hours are concerned, I would probably, um, because at 2:00 AM, going from 2:00 AM to midnight is already, the applicant has mentioned, is already a pretty big compromise in terms of the, um, business prospects. And so, I think starting with having the din, the drive-through close at midnight when the rest of the restaurant closes may be good. But one of the thoughts I have is because it seems like this restaurant is designed more to serve the, uh, people that are ordering by mobile app, as well as people that might be stopping, because they have late-night jobs, they're working the odd shifts, not the, not the nine-to-five like I work. And so there's a, those are, those are customers who stand to benefit from this Taco Bell. So if we suggested midnight closing of the drive-through, I wonder how many people would be cut off if they were to get Taco Bell later, because they needed to get a meal on their way to work, the odd shifts. I do like the, um, the staff report, it was very helpful to understand how this application fits into the rest of the general plan, how it stands to benefit the community, um, and how it adds to the vitality and diversity of businesses in Walnut Creek, as economic development is one of our values that the City Council is focusing on for this two-year cycle.
So, uh... We seem to be, uh, the, the kind of the open question seems to be, um, to require the, that all services cease at midnight, or do we allow something further? It seems like the, the applicant has indicated, uh, you know, that midnight can, can work for them. You know, that, uh, you know, whether something early or they don't know yet whether, uh, you know, they're going to be sitting around twiddling their thumbs between 10:00 and midnight or not. But, uh, at least midnight seems, seems, uh, perhaps a reasonable compromise. Commissioner Kound?
Um, just looking at, um, looking at Google Maps and seeing that, that other hours of the other businesses, um, so it is showing Safeway as midnight closing every day. Um, and then Mountain Mike's, that's there, closes at midnight on Friday and Saturday, and 10:00 PM on the other weekdays. So, it would not be the only restaurant that's open till midnight. It, it doesn't, I did not find anything that's open till 2:00 AM, so, so, so midnight does seem like a, a closer match to the, um, to the rest of the existing businesses.
I'd like to say, I, I think that the, um, I wouldn't want it to, I know that we're now the, uh, Design Review Body, um, but that is, uh, not particularly our expertise. So I'm not inclined to, to, uh, second-guess the design review, and they made some suggestions. I think the, um, there was a response to the suggestions, perhaps in terms of the colors, a minimal one, but, um, you know, went from black to a lighter black, and from purple to a bolder purple. But, uh, you know, there was, there was some movement there at least. So I, uh, I think the sense I'm getting is that, the key thing is the hours. And that, uh, that change, we might, uh, take the staff recommendation. So, I'll, so I'll invite a motion.
Ready for a motion?
So I would make a motion to adopt this resolution. Resolution number XXXX, conditional use permit and design review, application number Y-24-71, nine, nineteen sixty, Tides Valley Boulevard. With the condition that, it's on page four, right?
Yeah.
Okay, where is it?
There's a couple of references, uh, under number two on page four.
Okay, um, that the, that the dining room will close at 12:00 AM daily, same as before, and then the drive-up and take-out window will also close at midnight.
All right. So for, for clarity, that was, these store closes at midnight?
Yes, at midnight, 12:00 AM.
All right.
Second.
Any comments on the motion? If not, uh, would you call the roll?
Getting my notes.
Okay, there's a motion to approve with a s, condition of approval for the hours till midnight, on a daily basis. Commissioner Quoc?
Yes.
Commissioner Strongman?
Yes.
Commissioner Moran?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Kound?
Yes.
Commissioner Klopp?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nighting?
Yes.
And Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, thank you all. Concludes that hearing item. And we'll move on to item five, which is commission considerations. Any considerations that we should be considering? Commissioner Strongman?
Uh, yes, I, since this California State Legislature has decided to amend or reform sequo, I would really appreciate a tutorial on what the changes are and how it impacts us on a daily basis. Why don't you figure it out?
So would we, yeah. They're, they're fairly, you're, you're speaking of AB 131 and SB 232?
AB 131, SB 130.
There, there are, there are some, um, there's some basic or, or general things that they do, but there's also some other language in those bills that we need to get our arms around. And when we do so, we can either, um, we can either discuss it at a meeting, or we can, I can distribute some information. Maybe we'll start with that?
Thank you.
We're working on a summary right now.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, any other considerations? Could move on to number six, that commission member and staff reports or announcements.
Yes, I have an update, uh, from the Transpac Committee.
Oh, thank you.
So I attended the Transpac meeting today, which is a regional subgroup of the Contra Costa Transportation Authority, um, and the topics on the agenda today were looking at, uh, the processes underway for considering projects for the clean air, uh, work. There is currently a bidding process for requests for the next fiscal year. And, uh, interestingly enough, the Walnut Creek Bike Way project was approved in this last year, but apparently is not fully funded, so, uh, there's some work, uh, in that area. So, um, just so you know, that our county is continuing to try to create, uh, more clean air. There are also, as I reported last month, is work going on collaborating across, uh, CT, the Contra Costa Transportation Authority areas... Contra Costa Transportation Authority areas, and with county connection, to look at options for expanding the free bus rides for students. And so, they're looking at actually a potential six-month expansion after the fall program that usually goes on. And the last, I think, most important thing is the, there is a integrated transit plan that's being developed, which really is looking at creating a unified vision for transit services throughout Contra Costa County. The group that's working on this goes across multiple agencies, and is currently on sort of a lunch-and-learn tour, where they're going to all the different local meetings to try to present the drafts and what they're thinking, and the results of the analysis they've done. I think of interest to us is that there are some recommendations about Ignacio Valley Corridor, and looking at transit lanes in that area, which may or may not be in keeping with what we want to do. So, just to be aware, and I'm in touch with Matt Redmond, to keep him abreast of that group's activities as well, so.
The Bike Way project, could you elaborate just a little bit?
Those are the words. The Walnut Creek Bike Way project.
Is that the, the one along Olympic Boulevard? There was a fairly detailed plan to connect the Iron Horse Trail to the Lumber and the Loop, so.
Sorry. Words of the project, dollar amount, that's all that was there.
I think that's what they meant.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments? By the way, thank you for taking on that role for us.
I'm feeling very fortunate that Matt Redmond agreed to help me figure out what the heck they're talking about, because it's all new to me. But it's interesting, because I, my, I've really been advocating for the other members to get their planning commissioners or transportation commissioners there, and now there are three of us. So, I started with one, and now there are three, so I have buddies. Awesome.
Started a trend.
Yep.
Okay, very good. If there's no other items, we stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.